Okay, y'all hear me? Okay.
Yep.
All right, just wanted to be sure. Uh, is this everybody? We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Just thank you for today and thank you for another new year. We pray that we would serve you this year as we should. And thank you so much for the sacrifice that you made for each and every one of us to make the decision to live with you. I thank you, Lord, that last year is gone and we got a brand-new year ahead of us. And that we pray that you would just help each and every healthcare worker, first responder, those that are on the front lines. We know that they're in danger constantly. And we pray that your will be done in our nation, in our state, in our county. We pray that day that you helps to make decisions that will be beneficial to those that we serve. We ask you of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
They said I couldn't retire until I was 40. All right, we've got, we've been doing, we've been doing the Texas pledge all these years. We have one, uh, one employee who, who knows it now, so. Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formality can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. All right, we only have people that, well, we don't have any public here today. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and jump into the new business. We're gonna skip some of the other stuff so that, uh, Tammy, David, and Tom can get on with. I don't know who the other number is there. So they can do all the foot there doing. Court to discuss and consider setting a date for a public hearing to designate approximately eighty-one point one-six acres located at Dermott as the Dermott Electricity Area Reinvestment Zone. And authorizing publication thereof for public hearing on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Said zone being described as all of the west one half of the northwest quarter of section number four-three-seven, block number ninety-seven of the H and T C. R Y, I don't know which R Y stands for. Is it railroad?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Company survey patent volume forty-D, number thirty-six, Curry County, Texas, containing eighty-one point one-six acres or more or less. So, um.
Judge, that dovetails with the second item on the tax abatement application. The court wants to discuss those both at the same time. It may make it look more economical.
Consider the tax abatement application of K C E T X or Texas thirteen LLC, including terms and conditions of any proposed abatement agreement authorized. Notice be published and provided to other taxing entities and setting a date for the public hearing on the proposed abatement agreement, February sixteenth. And you each have a copy of what they're discussing today. Whenever y'all are ready to start. Hopefully, I can hear y'all. Oh, hang on, David, I'm not hearing you. I heard something.
Judge, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Tom.
All right, Dave, I'm not sure what's on your audio. You are working. Now, there's something, whatever you switched. It's showing it's not connected.
There you go.
Now?
Yeah.
There you go. All righty. Can everyone in the room hear me?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Thank you for bearing with me during that technical difficulty. But, uh, thank you all for allowing us to present to you this project. We're really excited about it. Uh, I'm Dave Cocke and my colleagues, Tammy Violet and Tom Dougal. That number that called in, that's Tammy, she joined from her cell phone, is below. So, though, most of the information that we'll be providing or talking about is included in the application, but feel free to ask any questions. So, we represent a national company that develops, um, large-scale battery storage facilities. Have operation, their operations in the northeast as well as Texas. Uh, and they are continuing to look at opportunities to expand where they, they have facilities. They brought us on to help them with the financial due diligence around, um, potential investments throughout Texas and the U.S. And one of the key areas that, for these facilities is property taxes. And so, what we are looking, um, for you all, is supported our application. These brought, these projects, they will bring investments to your community and are pretty much self-sufficient once they're operational. They're not gonna require any additional, um, school or infrastructure or any other public services. So, they're pretty self-sufficient. So, everything that is, that occurs with this facility, all the property taxes that are generated are really a net benefit to the community. So, when we were putting together our proposed abatement schedule, what we did is we looked at your current, um, solar and wind projects in the community that you all had supported before. And those projects were provided, uh, ten-year, a hundred percent abatement. Um, and in lieu of the property taxes, it was a one thousand twenty dollar per megawatt charge. And if it's in solar, they're slightly different than battery storage. Those projects, just as a general, uh, metric, is one megawatt of capital investment. One megawatt equals around one million dollars of capital investment. Whereas battery storage, one megawatt of battery storage equals around five hundred thousand dollars in capital investment. So, because of that metric, um, that's where we provided the proposed ten-year, a hundred percent abatement with a payment in lieu of five hundred and ten dollars per megawatt. Just, if there's, just a couple of things around battery storage itself for you, for you that do not know. What battery storage is gonna do is it's gonna complement those existing wind and solar facilities that you all have supported in the past. It's gonna add some reliability to the grid. One of the primary ways that you all may, could be impacted or, or see a difference with this facility if it gets constructed is it, it would reduce flickering, um, the battery storage projects. It allows, um, the grid to really respond to peak demands, um, in fractions of a second versus some of the older technologies can take a little bit of time to get operational. So, I know I kinda ran through, through a little bit there. Uh, and then the last economic benefit, um, for Skerry County itself, as opposed to some of the wind and solar projects, is these projects from a, a sales tax perspective are fully taxable. Um, and with, with Skerry County having a half percent sales tax, you will see a tax revenue from the sales tax percent perspective. And I think I forgot to mention, um, as I was kinda running through things, this project, uh, the capital investment that the company is considering is twenty-five to thirty million dollars of investment.
And it's fifty megawatts, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And when we were talking the other day, we were talking about, uh, the value of the property going up as well. And y'all were discussing that with property owners. Is that correct?
Yep. That, that's correct. So, the company, as, as part of any of their, their lease agreements with the property owners, they will take care of any incremental taxes that result from a change in use of the property. So, any incremental property taxes as a result of this project, they would, our, our client would be responsible for.
No, sir. Just, uh, wanna know what the commissioner's thoughts are on it before we take the next step. And it's something they want to entertain and we'd look at. First step, obviously, would be designation of a reinvestment zone. And then agree to general terms on the abatement agreement so that we can get those out to the other entities since we have to give them thirty days notice now as opposed to what the law used to be. So, just need input from the court on whether it's something that they're interested in pursuing with the abatement like we have on, down on the wind farms and the solar farms.
I don't really know why, why you wouldn't because it's beneficial to Skerry County. And it's taxpayers of Skerry County. We, we will have technically no money in it. Uh, because only the landowner is only one that has agreed to the contract. We don't. Other than the abatement, and I don't know why you wouldn't, uh, benefit Skerry County's sales tax and, uh, property, property taxes. And if the company, which is the windmill, did the same thing, they absorbed the increase in property taxes. As far as I know, all of them are that way. So, I don't really know why you wouldn't, uh, want this for the benefit of Skerry County.
If you look, the footprint's not that big. It's, uh, forty acres and twenty acres is the actual lease that they're on. So, it's not as much of a footprint as wind or solar. It's supplementing and it's diversifying as well. And it's keeping energy here, which is, that's kind of our fourth phase, energy, so.
I have one question.
Sure.
Is it kinda like, uh, like somebody moved in a, uh, clubhouse, say, out here in the country? All right. What we do is build it, uh, the bar ditch where they can get in if they have a whistler or whatever like that. In other words, we fix it where they can get in. Do, is this part of ideal? I'm just asking. I'm not saying no, yes, or.
Yeah.
Why? I'm just asking before.
So, what, he's, he's asking, so, uh, if this property doesn't have an access, whose responsibility is it gonna be to provide the access, uh, like a road access onto that property? Over, uh, bar ditches if there's a bar ditch or, uh, just, uh, a road, basically?
I, I have to confirm, my understanding is that there was, there's no issues with access. And the, in our experience with, with this client, that is something that they would bear.
Okay.
It's me. I just wanted it clear before.
Sure.
Apparently, we got there and then everybody's hair sticking up.
Yeah. That's, that's something else that we would look at as a road use agreement with the others. Uh, they will be providing transmission lines from there to, uh, substation that's not too far away. So, uh, that'll work the end as well.
Well, we can keep the road there. You know, if they're gonna spend money here, we can keep the road there. If it's, unless it's just something, and they've been planning a windmill to go through there so if they're gonna tear them up, they probably would already be too low, so.
I'll just keep bringing in those two batteries.
That's good. Just wanted to know before I got there.
Gotcha. Any other questions or thoughts?
And I would just like to ask, uh, notice that y'all have this facility in Fort Lebaka. Is that right?
Yes.
And the, the, I assume you also received a tax abatement come from that group or that county or at that time, whenever you put in that facility?
Yeah. So, for, for those facilities, those were on the smaller side of their, their operations, the Fort Lebaka, um, facility. Those are, what did they, nine megawatt projects? And so, the financials were, were fairly different for those. Um, we, we have pursued and have secured for the larger facilities that are fifty megawatts and above. The financials and the implications from the property taxes themselves, um, become much more significant. So, it's a, and they did not get an abatement on those smaller facilities.
And so, one thing else I have to say is thank you for looking at West Texas. And of course, I know a lot of that plays into the facilities that we have here that can actually utilize what you have to put there. And definitely, the flickering is a bad thing. I'm assuming that yours, you are absorbing electricity off the grid at an off-peak hour, like in the summertime, whenever we have brownouts and blackouts. You're absorbing it at a lower rate and then you are putting it back on the grid at a higher rate. So, that's the way that you're able to become profitable or make the money that you're going to.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you for being here.
Well, we got, uh, several wind farms around here, potentially another one. And if this is, this works, sooner or later, this will not be the only storage facility.
Right.
That's it. So, that's how many, uh, what you put, it's a, we have to carry it here and back there. Where is the substation? How far are you?
Yeah, I don't remember how far the substation is from, from the facility. I remember looking at the map, seeing it there, but I don't remember how far it was.
I can, I don't know. Not sure how large the parcel is, but it's essentially a parcel between the substation and their, their parcel.
Yeah. So, maybe a quarter mile. Not, not far, less than a mile.
Am I understanding that it's a hundred cent, ten-year?
That's what they're requesting. And that's what, I need a little bit of direction from you guys because we'll have to draft a proposed, uh, abatement agreement and forward that to the other entity. Now, granted, it can change, but I'd like to have it as close as possible. So, if that's what the court, you don't vote on that today. But if that's what you instruct me to send to the other taxing entities, it's going to be the proposed or potential agreement. That's what we'll draft and work on with this company and get those to the other entities, so.
Five, ten per megawatt in Little Rock?
Yeah. And, and of course, what, we was talking about wind energy. And what we did was a lower rate for five years with wind energy and then a higher rate for the next five years. And so, I didn't know if we were crafting it that way. What Mike is, what they're asking for was just a one percent, and then straight across the board, twenty-five thousand.
Whatever the number comes out to you.
Number comes out to be, uh, for their, for their facility.
Right.
And that's what the other entities have done, the hospital and the college, they haven't graduated theirs like we have. So, it really doesn't matter to me from a drafting perspective. We can do it either way. The flat ten years was a little easier to draft. We did that early on with the wind farms to help them cash flow early on.
Yes.
When they were first starting up and that just became our pattern, but it's not necessary.
Okay.
So, this would have matched what the college and the hospital have done with their wind and solar abatement agreements would be the flat tenure.
I, I don't have any, any problem with that. One other thing I would, would ask, 'cause I've always asked after the first time, was would there be a problem with a, uh, inflation rate put in there? And you may have talked to them about that. I know we didn't discuss it. Uh, we did a four percent straight across the board, uh, seems like.
After a few years on a, an additional wind farm or additional solar farm.
Yes.
We did not discuss that because at this point, we're talking about one phase.
Right.
Now, I know that there was some discussion early on about maybe this was the first phase and there might be, or there would be room for development of a second and there'll be a third phase in this eighty-acre tract. You'd have to ask them about that, but then I don't know what the timeframes are on that either.
Sure. Understood. And so, would that be something that, and, and the reason I'm asking that, because everyone knows that the, as, as inflation goes, you have a, uh, purchasing power of the dollar goes down. And so, the twenty-five thousand we would receive the first year wouldn't be the same as the twenty-five thousand. Now, taxes could go up, you know, within that ten-year period. But with a set rate for ten years, the twenty-five thousand in five years isn't going to be the same as the, unless F O M C keeps the rate at zero, which I don't see that happening either. And so, is that something that you would even consider on y'all's side? And it would just be, it wouldn't be a, and, and that's something that Mike can discuss with you guys as we, uh, as he looks through the contract and, uh, and agrees on the, the, uh, every, that the details in it are, go along with the county. And I'm, I'm certain that you pretty well.
Typically, what, typically what you're talking about is we do a ten-year flat fee. And if a second project comes in, let's say, three or four years later.
Yeah.
The cost of doing business has gone up four percent. So, instead of expecting that same flat fee, it might escalate three, four, five percent.
Just like we did with the year.
Right. So, that would, so this first phase would be a flat ten-year. If phase two comes in three, four years down the road, the price may be a little, a little bit different. The pilot payment may be a tad different.
Exactly.
That's what we've done in the past. So, for this discussion, I, my vision was it would be a flat ten-year. And if phase two comes in, in two years, three years, then we revisit that pilot amount in this fair enough.
Just wanted to be upfront from the beginning.
Kind of makes sense.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
You'll do both?
Sure, let's do them both.
Mike, more than. Court set the date for the public hearing for their reinvestment loan and consider the tax abatement application.
All in favor? Understand?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, Judge, I'll get the notices sent out to the other taxing entities. I'll get the notice, um, prepared for the newspaper, try and get it published in this weekend's paper so that we don't have enough time to have a public hearing on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And get those other agenda items drafted for the nineteenth and then on to February sixteenth meeting. And maybe we can finalize it on or about that February sixteenth meeting.
Y'all okay with that? We've got the ball rolling now, so.
Yeah. That sounds good. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate y'all coming to our meeting.
I wish we could meet in person and hopefully we'll meet you in person sometime.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Looking forward to that. Thank y'all.
All right. Be careful.
All right, we'll go back to the top and old business. Court to discuss and consider increasing project schedule and staffing. Anything going on? Yes.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I would like to stir up a little bit of dust.
Okay.
Done had another idiot. That's what I think he is. I wished he'd show up. They caught in our, well, we didn't catch him. We caught his, his steps and his shadow and everything else in that, uh, barn out there. So, I've, and what's bothering me, it's not so much that, uh, we take keys out of everything. You're stealing. But there's so many folks now that just just do this. I don't wanna say it on the magazine there, but just do that to your, uh, gas or your, uh, open, opening an oil deal down there, uh, you know. And, uh, so, uh, we just got, we finally got equipment and it'd be a dang dirty shame for a bunch of idiots to, you know, that cost you a lot of money. The only thing I know, dude, is just trying to fix the water. When they get up there so far and they trip over the top of that dang thing, maybe they'll be talking with a squeaky voice after they fall to the ground.
So, did they actually get into the building or just into the?
As far as I know, just, uh, all we can, all we could get was, uh, you know, the, uh, round the, uh, the graders and that kind of stuff. No, I don't think he got into the building.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, you mess with the grader, all you gotta do is pour a little sand in it. I've had that done before.
Yeah.
And it don't work on a truck either.
Okay.
So.
All right, we'll need to look into the options on, uh, camera system, alarm system, something like that.
Well, I've got all that.
You did?
Yeah. They, uh, they come out there, they're good. They come out there every time we call them. But, I mean, you, 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 you can't get, uh, you just, I'm, nobody's, uh, uh, identified anybody yet and I don't, they can't. You know, 'cause if they could get their car in there or they could see the license plate or something like that, but the only thing I don't do is just try to build a bigger fence around the dang thing.
Okay. We'll look at some options on that, what we can do there. We need to try to keep people out of there.
That's right. I mean, it's not. We just got too much at stake. It, it took, I don't know how long, unless she was out there twelve years. And, uh, we just now got the equipment to do stuff with and still lacking one, one or two pieces, but we're getting along.
Sure.
But we sure can't get along if we lose what we've got, uh, and, uh, and somebody tearing the dang thing up.
Sure.
And, but, uh, like I say, it can be fixed. It can be fixed. You just don't talk to them.
Sure. Sometimes you gotta spend a little money.
I think that's all we gotta do is just, because we're, we're not doing any good right now the way we're doing it.
I'm gonna get me a dog, baby.
Well, y'all beloved on that son of a bitch alone. I don't believe they, he's doing anything. I know it. Yeah, that's, it'll lick you dead. I don't, I don't think he likes me. I'd like to have that mashie put on her that that girl of mine got, but I don't know that I could. I don't think he likes me either. And there again, you get into that kind of deal right there. I don't want you getting in it. If you get somebody over in there and there's a dang dog with them. Get one leg and chew on it till they get out there to get him out, uh, you know. My man, I love him.
Cover with certain dogs, so. Also, some insurances won't cover with certain dogs.
I mean, you're right. I mean, you're right.
Sure.
We gotta do something. They just can't keep it living like we're living.
Right. Okay. Right. Okay. We'll look at some options on what we can do there.
All right.
See what we can figure out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We can start up our, our barn that's fences down behind, we lace it. So...
Well, that's a little different deal now. You're out here on a freeway. Nobody, everybody just going Colorado City that way. There's a lot of difference. And I think the type of people that go down your road is kind of a different people than go down this road out here.
Do you brush radio roll?
Huh?
Do you brush radio roll?
I haven't now yet. I'm thinking that it would be just about as good as to get the longer stakes.
Figure that out, see what we need to do.
Stick them out. On the existing fence, and then come along there with about five or six. If you got them long enough, stake, well, it good enough. Because when they get out China, it ain't gonna hurt them when they fall, but they're not gonna be able to crawl over it. So, I'm pretty good. And I don't want to bite him.
It is a thought. I'll go out there and look at it with you sometime. Figure out. All right, anything else there? I'll go with you sometime and look at what you got and figure all that out.
We've got two houses there. I don't know, will they wipe them up or not?
Right. If you got a fence down, we need to fix that.
Cross ruined there. Golly, he might get you if he wipe, if he wipe him up.
Right. All right, court to discuss and consider extending, continuing, or renewing the declaration of disaster for Scarry County on March sixteenth. Executes on March sixteen, twenty twenty-four, period, no more than thirty days. Oh, that's when we did it originally. I still think we need this. It also protects some of our employees as well, who do get a lot of callouts. So, if we don't have this in place, it can hurt them as well. And it's still part of, it's still a disaster declaration federally and statewide, so...
Can I butt in just saying?
Sure.
What is our, I noticed, reason I'm asking, I noticed Aviling was two hundred and fifty dead, a hundred and seventy-six. Now, I don't know where the hat, what day it was. I got a Saturday or a Sunday paper. I don't know how strange that was.
You're asking what our...
Thinking I hadn't seen nothing on, on that, of course, I don't look at the dang Facebook that much.
That's where it is. Right now, as of yesterday, active cases were a hundred and seventy-eight. Total deaths was thirty-one. Total recovered is sixteen hundred and seventy. And so, we have a total of eighteen hundred and seventy-nine cases as of yesterday, total, from beginning to now.
That's pretty close to what we got then. If they, or they have a hundred and ninety-six.
Current?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I read it right now.
We got, since the last update, which was, let me go back and look, on December thirtieth. From December thirtieth to January fourth, it was a hundred and twelve new positives and sixty-two new recoveries. So, they're coming off, but they're coming right back. We've got others that are coming on.
Well, have you got any? It had to be just a guess. Reason? I mean, are we doing...
We expected a spike about two weeks after Thanksgiving. We expect a spike about two weeks after Christmas, and about two weeks after New Year's. It takes about two weeks to start showing signs and symptoms, and group gatherings is a big part of it.
Okay, and then you say, what happens now?
As far as what?
Do they keep going up, or they gotta have it off a little bit, or... This is after the last big hop.
Yeah, this is, that was about two weeks after Thanksgiving. So, that would put it at about twenty per day, twenty-two, twenty new cases per day, roughly. That's just guesstimating. Right now, we were averaging fourteen a day for a while. So, it's gone up, and hopefully, we'll start getting some vaccine for the public in the next, who knows when? We're still waiting on that. We have four hundred that have been designated for frontline, doctors, nurses, EMS, police, fire. But we're waiting on more to come in for the general public. So, that should start helping mitigating, but we don't know when that's gonna be.
What's the percentage?
Percentage? Which percentage?
Percentage of Scarry County, we got so many positive.
So, we, population is about seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
You're talking about the current or the total?
The total.
Total is about one percent, eighteen seventy-nine out of seventeen thousand. So, that's about a one percent positivity rate here in Scarry County. Over, over that period of time. However, so yeah, yeah, that's about a one percent, little more than one percent positivity rate. As far as testing, I couldn't tell you what the numbers are as far as positivity rate on the testing at one time. So, out of a hundred people that go get tested in one day, the positivity rate was about thirty percent for us about a week ago, two weeks ago, something like that. It's probably going up since then with with the groups after Thanksgiving.
Court, I'm making a motion that we continue to extend or renew the declaration of disaster for Scarry County, especially in the light of what Griffin just did, shutting their country down again until February. And we already know the new strain is here, and we know what California's doing there. If they look like they're dying, they can't even, EMS can't even bring them to the hospital. And so, I think this is gonna continue the way it looks. I think we need to continue making sure that our people are protected as much as possible.
Okay.
For it to be...
Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Court to approve bond and oath of office from County Attorney. We will do everybody else's at the next meeting. Missed that one.
She's special.
She's special. All in favor? Okay.
Lately, I've heard my engineers learn where slay the fish.
All right, court to consider line item, transfers and budget amendments.
None.
None. All right. Counsel, favorable?
There is a lot of that. Two million, three oh four, six thirty-three, sixty-seven. But this was also three weeks worth of tables.
Three weeks worth of tables.
Plus two whole.
All in favor? All right. We'll go ahead and go into executive session now. And ten, your first time will end.
Y'all have a good one.
You too, Roger. Thank you.